Welcome, Marlo. Do you know how to, are you muted or?
I just unmuted. Hello?
Hello, welcome, welcome to the select board.
Thank you.
Mm hmm. And, okay, so tonight's gonna be a very, very brief meeting. We have one thing on the agenda. And so we've had a lot of talk about a code. Russ, is it code inspection, right?
Code inspector, life safety inspector.
Code inspector, life safety inspector. Our person, Tom Bay, is a shared person with Warner. And he does building inspections for both towns. And he is our life, safety and health inspector as well. And he does a really good job. And we talked to him two years ago about expanding his role into a role that would include enforcing subdivision regulations, zoning regulations, and also wetland, wetland issues for the Conservation Commission. And he was interested in doing all of that. So then, Russ worked really hard on a good job description and good wording for the contract, which I think both of those things went to the lawyer, John, and he approved both things. Is that right? Russ?
I believe so, but Dana was the one who contacted the lawyer.
Okay, Dana, so.
Yes. I have, he has looked at the updates to the job description. He's looked at the contract. We have gotten the recommendation from Primex for the insurance. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't really answer your question. But yes, John has finished looking at it and has no issues with the documents.
Okay, excellent. So, um, you know, I, I would like to make a motion right now on this thing. Do, do, does anybody have any further questions, matters of discussion?
I'm gonna live up to my name for my nickname for you, if question may ask. We have on the SharePoint, I saw that there was one that was a draft contract from the sixth, and then also one for today. Russ, what changed?
So that is how we're gonna do the insurance. Because there's a little bit of debate on how the general liability insurance is gonna work. So Tom stated that the town usually covers him under general liability. But we talked to Wendy today. And Wendy says that the town has never covered Tom on general liability. So that's something that the language changes based on what we want to cover. But the language is going to say the same. It just will switch out one for the other depending on which way it goes.
One is saying that the. Our general insurance.
Yep. Did that Dana say that again? I couldn't hear you.
I'm sorry. He may be talking about our general insurance, our overall liability coverage.
Uh huh. Um, that what, Russ, did you have a chance to talk to Tom about the insurance that he carries currently?
So that's what I, what he told me when we discussed his insurance. That the town had covered his insurance in the past.
Oh. So. And Wendy says no?
And Wendy says no.
Not as a separate policy is what she means.
Well, you know, that's interesting. I mean, you always, you always hear the phrase, you don't know how good or bad your insurance is until you need it. So apparently, he, we have, he has not needed it because he would find that it's very bad insurance indeed. So, um, huh. Well, I think, I thought that he said that he had his own insurance. Because Warner, I mean, certainly, I wonder, did he say that Warner was, was insuring him?
You know, we are on the hook if he's working for us.
Yes.
And, you know, if he had a separate policy, yes, that would protect the town. And I think it's a great idea and have the town listed as an additional insured. But when push comes to shove, if someone were, if there was some sort of incident, and I don't mean it to sound like this, but the town is the one with the big pockets. And it would profit the town's insurance anyway. Although I would recommend that he have some sort of liability insurance. And I was under the impression that he had his own liability insurance.
So was I, so.
He did mention having his own liability insurance when I talked to him. But he also said the cap, he was under the town's coverage when he worked for the town. So.
And he's right on that. I mean, I would agree.
And so what did our insurance, I know you sent this out to them. What did they say in regards to all of that and the amounts?
They gave us the, the recommended amounts as far as supplemental insurance. We do have those amounts. Actually, ours is more, and I think it's 1 million, 2 million, Russ?
Yep, 1 million, 2 million.
And a 2 million aggregate. Looking roughly, Russ and I have decided it would probably cost about $500 to $600 a year for that insurance. If the town chose to help toward the cost of it, if the town chose to have him have a separate policy for his own, there's a word for services rendered, the professional services rendered.
Do we know what Warner has for that with him?
You know, I don't, I never thought to ask. That was silly, but they obviously have the same insurance we have as far as the general insurance. And I kind of think now that I'm hearing Russ say that, it sounds like he was depending on the town's insurance. So if you decided to go forward, I guess you'd need to decide what you'd like for insurance. And we was, we were hoping to talk to him a little more about know if he agreed to pay for the insurance. But we have not heard from him today or last week either.
So that kind of leads to, no matter what we decide there, whether, well, I suppose if, if we're saying that we want to do it and we want to foot the bill, that's one thing. Because he's unlikely to say, yeah, I don't want that. But especially if we're asking him to foot the bill because maybe he is for Warner or not. Or we thought he had it already. And of course, our, we didn't really budget for that insurance portion. Then the question becomes, if we try to say this is gonna be our contract, does that null and void the working relationship that we have currently? So that until this is signed and he agrees to it or some renegotiated contract, he can't work for us anymore?
Oh, my goodness.
I don't think that's the, the issue. I, I think that he's, he's working for us. We were under the impression he had his own insurance. And we're not sure of that right now. He certainly is under our insurance for his, if there was some sort of incident that happened.
Now Dana, are you saying that he's? Sorry, go ahead, go ahead.
I was, um, I was, I was just thinking that if the board wanted to go forward with the positions and how you wanted to handle the insurance. I think it's not unusual for, you know, a general contractor like this. And again, with what he's, we would have, we still have work to do on the fees and the rates. And it seems unreasonable to expect someone to have an additional expense between $500 and $600 a year to cover their insurance. Would we need to have additional insurance than what we have? I doubt it because we have, we have full coverage for all our people that are working for us, including contracted people.
That, that you're saying that we currently have that?
Yeah.
Okay, so he would be considered covered under that?
Yes.
Okay, so we wouldn't actually need to be trying to budget more money?
Um, I don't think so. I, you know, obviously, it's too late this year to do that. But I, I don't think we really need to have. I think it's always good for independent contractor, our other independent contractor, Emmett. He's covered under, some of his liabilities covered under, under our insurance. And, but he has, as a different type of contractor, he has his own insurance. So it's a little, it's a little different than.
Yeah, that's one of the reasons I was kind of wondering if Tom actually had or would be carrying his own insurance. Because if he's doing this sort of thing for multiple towns and/or if he goes out and does a, a home inspection for somebody. I don't know if he still does any of that. But if he were to go do that, then he would want insurance for himself as his own business as a contractor. And so then none of the towns would need it because he would already have it, which would be different, so.
He does have something, I can't imagine.
He did mention he did have insurance for his own business.
I would certainly like to see what it was so that we could compare it to what we thought we needed. And I'm not saying that he should be covered automatically and we should put the bill under our insurance. But if something happened, realistically, it would fall back to our insurance if he did not have an additional coverage. And the town were not listed as an additional insured.
So, so this is funny to me. So you're saying that he could be covered? He would be covered under the town insurance? But that would be the case without a, a specific insurance policy on him?
Well, and, and I'm not an insurance expert, but I believe that what would happen if there was an incident, all the insurance companies would be involved. And they would decide who pays what if there were damages to be paid. It's kind of how. And naturally, each insurance company tries to avoid responsibility however they can.
Yep.
I answered that very nicely. But I, what I'm trying to say is that everyone tries to limit their liability.
Well, he's a, you know, he's, he's been with the town for a number of years now and he's.
I think your option, if you, sorry, Chris, but I think your option, for example, if you were to have someone else, if you were to hire a code enforcement officer as an employee, obviously, he'd be under the town's umbrella under insurance, which Tom also is as a contractor. Working and especially have a formal contract with him for services.
Is that sufficient, Dave?
So, so Dana, are you saying that we don't need to worry about the version of the contract that mentions that he will have insurance? And because we definitely have insurance for him or no?
I think what Russ and I were trying to show you or we're trying to get the point across, however we did it, was if there were, if you wish to have a separate policy and it was cost prohibitive for him, would the town have any interest in covering the cost of the insurance? Naturally, no, but it is part of getting done what we need to get done. I believe there were two contracts there, Russ. One, if the town were to cover the cost of his supplementary insurance and the other, not.
Correct.
And the one not covering is the one that we saw before.
What was that? Yes.
Yeah.
Oh. Okay, so the one, the one that we would, would be concerned with tonight would be in SharePoint, would be the first draft inspection services contract?
So there's a 406 and a 413. And the 406 one is the one that says that he should have the insurance.
Yes.
413 is the one that says that the town will provide the insurance.
So, here's, here's what I'm wondering here. If he, he's a general contractor with full insurance and on, on himself as a general contractor in his own business, would, would that insurance, I wonder, cover him doing our work?
I believe he has insurance because obviously he is a general contractor.
Right.
And he works for another community. So I believe he must have insurance. And I'm sorry, we couldn't get ahold of him to find out exactly what it was. He told Russ he had insurance. After, I believe after that conversation, we received the, what the Primex recommended for coverage limits. Perhaps, we don't know this for sure, maybe Tom has those coverage limits.
Well, I think that the next board needs to perhaps have a, have, have this thing straightened out.
You know, I think you, if you're willing, if you wanting to go ahead with this position, we certainly could work out the insurance part of the contract. And if he gave us some feedback and I, we needed to come back to the board, then we would do so.
I think technically though, when he, when he works for us and, and does, and we've changed all our fees, I don't think that, I don't think the taxpayers will be paying anything for his insurance if they have to originally, if, if he has, the, the town has to cover him. Because all those fees would offset those, the monies coming in would offset all of the other things. No, right?
Yep, that's.
Once the fee schedule, schedule is adjusted accordingly, yes.
Yeah, right.
Good.
Yeah, I, I mean, to me, that all makes a lot of sense. And I would be surprised if he didn't already have the in, insurance levels that we're requesting. And so the only thing that we, or I should say that had been suggested by Primex. So if we were to move forward with the contract that says that he will show that we have the insurance and name this as an additional insured for when he's working with us, that should cover everything?
I think that's a good way to do it. You have to remember that the figure we got from Primex, they're insurance people, so they're very, very cautious. So are those limits reasonable? I think they are. I mean, that's what I ask people who provide insurance for jobs that they're doing for us for that. And I don't think it's all that cost prohibitive.
So that would be the 1 million, 2 million?
Yes.
Yeah.
Mm hmm. Okay.
However, we, we do have somebody here who, sorry, we do have somebody here with us who is going to be on the select board and also has a business that gets coverage from lots of things. So I don't know how much is good to divulge. But Marla, if you would care to share any of the, your thoughts on these insurance numbers, I, I would like to hear them.
Hi, hi, everyone. Yeah, no, I mean, yeah, it, it, it all depends on, you know, the structure of what like you're talking about as contract and the fact of, you know, what it will cost the town, which is $500 to $600 a year is what you're saying, right, Dana?
Yes.
Yeah, which, which, you know, on the end, end of the scope isn't tons of money on the town's behalf, I, not for, not for what we pay for liability and, and, you know, insurance. But, but with that being said, you know, it, it all depends on what and this is where I'm a little bit, don't have the right, you know, exact information of what, what he is, you know, and what he does with the other town. You know what I mean? You don't want to somehow, you know, create it, it somehow falling on to, to what we, what we have to cover. You know, which I'm sure it wouldn't. But, but his five, it $500 to $600 for the town is not, that seems very, very reasonable. But is what he, I don't know what you guys are paying him or what, what the deal is.
So, I think.
Is to have that insurance cost if, if it were the, if that were the case, by the fees when we renegotiate our fees for service.
Right. And so when you do renegotiate those fees, just make sure they cover that 500.
Absolutely. Russ, can you do that tomorrow?
Sure you can, sure you can.
I'm working on it, I'm working on it.
Okay, well, are you okay, Dave?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
I mean, I think we've got an understanding of what the, the two different contracts are. And then the, the open questions are, does he have that insurance that he can name us as additional insured? And what is the, like, how does the agreement work with Warner? Because we probably want to do somewhat similar to it instead of like getting the turnaround to like Warner of, hey, Webster covers everything, you should do that too. And, and then starting this whole back and forth sort of thing like that, that we don't want to get in the business of either, so.
No, I think, I think it's fine, however Warner's covering him. But we're our own entity.
And I would suggest, if I may jump in again, agreeing to the agreement without the town covering cost of insurance and see what he says. In the meantime, we'll find out from Warner what they do.
So. So you suggesting then that the contract delete those sections that have to do with insurance?
No, I don't, no, leave the insurance requirement in. But the, use the contract that does not state that the town is going to pick up the cost of the insurance.
Okay, so how do we?
Be another matter if I can't live with that and comes back to you. And we were hoping to have that addressed by now, but since we don't, we would have to come back to you with that.
Okay, so, so Dave, since I can't see those contract numbers and I don't know why I can't see them, which contract?
So it would be the same contract, the draft inspection services contract from 4621, the last time that we looked at it in the meeting.
Oh, okay, okay.
The newer one, which is for today, 413, is the one that includes the town paying for the insurance. Whereas 46 is the one that expected him to show proof of having the insurance.
Okay, and so when I make this motion, I'll refer to that then.
Sounds good.
Okay. So then, great, so then I, I'm gonna need a little help, Dana. I move to approve the position of code inspector along with the approved contract for services number 040621 as well as the job description recently approved by town council.
That's fine.
So I need a second to that.
We, I thought we already approved the job description last time.
We may have, but I wanted to fold everything into this.
Okay.
So I need a second.
You understand, I'll second it if Dave does. I was gonna, I'm leaving him the option. He's been on the board longer than me.
I, I was trying to let you have it because you always, you know.
Okay.
I jumped, so.
Then I'll second it, I'll second the motion.
Great, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Excellent, wonderful. So I think that, you know, you should maybe have invite, invite Tom into a select board meeting soon and, you know, just solidify all of these things. That would be my recommendation. So great, that's really, this is exciting. It's gonna be a very helpful thing for the town. And, you know, get, setting the fee structure in a more realistic way. It's gonna be really good for the town. I'm really excited about this and, and you know, I know that Sue Roth and Sue Roman have, you know, they've been working on making the, the building permitting process smoother, but, but filling in some holes. And so, you know, that's, that's something too. So before we leave though, I wanted to say that I reviewed, I watched the budget hearing on YouTube from, I think, the 4th of February. And it was a really good sort of reminder for, you know, to prep us for the town meeting on Saturday. And Saturday looks like it might be a little bit rainy in the morning, but good in the afternoon. So if the gods of municipal meetings are smiling on us, we'll be able to get this town meeting underway. And Marlo, you'll be there, correct?
Yes, I will.
Okay, you'll be sworn in on that day, I think at the end of town.
Yes.
You will be asked to lead the town in the Pledge of Allegiance. So make sure you know the words. Have you, have you?
You never know.
Well, I know, so a little cheat sheet will come in handy.
Yeah.
And then we'll just, we'll do, we'll do things pretty much the way we did them.
Last year. How about like last year, one hour town meeting, that'd be great.
Well, it should be even briefer this time.
Yeah, I think you're right.
The only discussion I think is gonna be possibly the petition at the end. There, that seemed to engage some people at the budget hearing. So, and Dana, are we as select board members allowed to vote on that petition?
We should be able to.
I don't see why not. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, you are. You can, you can vote on all the warrant, the articles as well. Provided you're on, you're a resident and on the checklist, of course.
I'm gonna have to make sure about that. And then, so town meeting is at 1:00. Mike wanted us there by 11:30 or 12:00, is that right, to help set up? Am I remembering?
That's what he said.
I think that's what he said. And I do know that they're kind of gathering about that time to get things put together. I'm planning to be around 11:00.
Oh, okay, okay, great.
Probably would get in the way, but I'll try and be quiet, you know?
Yeah. See what you can do about yourself, Dana.
I know, it's hard.
So, okay, anything else that we need to talk about, about town meeting? I'm going to, Mike, I was reading Mike's script. And so I'm sure, Dave, you've seen that. And Dee, have you seen the script?
Basically, we're doing what we did for the budget, I mean, the hearing, right?
Yeah, it's the same thing as the hearing.
Yeah.
But the, you know, right, so, so in the, in the script, Marla, you know, after Marlo does the Pledge of Allegiance, then, I don't know, some, something, a thing or two happens. And then I give a sort of a five minute summary of what the last year has been, what our fantastic accomplishments have been. And then we, I think we start going through the, the warrant.
Yep.
And Dave will handle the big, the big question, the big number two, just like you did before.
Yay budgets.
Yeah. So I think it ought to be good, it ought to be, I hope it will be fun.
As it doesn't start snowing, we'll be all set.
I know, I know, I know it. So, okay, I think that's it for tonight.
While we're all here, obviously you replied, but it's probably worth mentioning White Plains Bridge. And what it, what do we want to do and what should we be doing? Have we gotten? And then what it, what do we want to do and what should we be doing? Have we gotten the addresses? Yeah, sorry, have we gotten the updated contact information over to her at this point?
As far as property owners from the email.
The Hells, the Hells, yes, she doesn't know how to get a hold of the Hells.
I have not done that, but I will tomorrow.
Okay, that, that would be a priority for tomorrow to get that to her. And um, and I, when I wrote back to her, you know, I, I think I, I said that I was a little bit confused over them needing, us needing an easement on this. Um, I, you know, that, I thought that that would involve our lawyer to draw up easements.
Well, and we also need to know what it is they need. We can't draw up an easement until we know.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
And that's what I've been trying to get the message across, that he, asking someone for an easement is great, but you can't ask, I'd like an easement, but I have no idea what I'm asking you. You can't do that.
Well, Erin knows exactly what she would be asking.
And that's, you know, and I think that that's what we need.
Right. So Dave, I'm really glad that you got in touch with her. And I wrote to her and everybody else because I want, I want to make sure she knew you know, what, what the situation was here. So um, good luck following up on this. And it's very important to get done. Get it done by, by school, the beginning of school in the fall.
I'd like to have it done as soon as they're out of school, we'll start doing it, but you know, that's gonna be tough if we don't have a, it, that, I mean, we need the approval from DES first before we can do anything.
That's exactly right. So, so um, and, and DES has nothing to approve until she finishes the application. So, and she can't finish the application until she's got permission from the landowners. So this is, you know, everything is just kind of all, the whole string of trouble there. Um, so I'm, I am willing to contact the Hells and I don't know who the other people are. I, it's in her letter though, isn't it?
Sullivan's, Sullivan's live on one side of the road unless they move.
It was the, it was the trust, wasn't it?
Oh, she, that's right. She was having trouble getting hold of the, the trustee.
Easement, so Sullivan's verbally expressed support. Uh, you spoke with Borak. Uh, they don't have the Austin Trust. Uh, they can't get a hold of Susan Cragger, who's listed as the trustee of the Austin Trust.
Hmm.
And also need to talk to Hells who they had incorrect contact info for.
Hmm.
So it's the Austin Trust and the Hells.
Emmett is familiar with, and I don't know, Emmett told me that it wasn't the Austin Trust, that it was Peter Austin.
Oh.
Yes, it's somebody else, but I will see us, I'm seeing Emmett tomorrow and I will talk to him again about it to see what he can do to help us.
Okay.
Peter Austin owns the Austin Winery there right up on uh one twenty-seven.
Right.
Right, yeah, so that was, he probably is in charge of that, I would say.
Yeah.
Because I think he had, I think in some of that land, he was planting some kind of berry bushes for the wine at one time. I don't know if he still is, but.
Hmm. Well, if we had, if we had actual people that, that we could meet, you know, I, I'd be glad to go over there and maybe, you know, I, but I need Erin. I mean, Erin has to carve out that time so she can show them the, the plans and that they know about the gradient of the road, how the road's gonna be taller and all of that kind of thing. So they shouldn't give an easement until they've seen all of that.
Yeah.
So.
What is taking her? Is she that busy? I mean, it seems like it just seems stalled along, so.
I know, I know. It's taken five years.
Oh, is that long? Oh my God.
Yeah, yeah. And it's taken five years of various suggestions as to how to deal with this. And we're right back at what Emmett suggested five years ago. So, I know, I know. I mean, Emmett knows how to get stuff done. He knows how to do stuff, so.
It seems like on Garish Road, she was in charge of that too and it took forever and a day. And I don't know why, but seemed like it took years for that too, so.
Well, I think she's it for her business. This is her business and um.
Oh, this is her own business?
Yes, right angle engineering, yeah.
Oh, I thought she worked for somebody out of there. Oh, I didn't realize that.
I think she used to and then went off on her own to become right angle engineering.
Right.
Oh, okay, that makes, yeah, that makes sense, but it just seems, it's very discouraging when you want to get these things done. And like you said, we're trying to get it in, done this year and four years ago. I mean, so.
We're, we can, but there's things that we have to have.
Yeah, no, I agree, but um.
So Dana, if you can respond to that email thread with the updated contact information and at the same time request what the easements need to say so we can run them by our lawyer, uh, then hopefully she'll respond with, okay, I, I'm contacting them and this is what you should run by your lawyer. I don't know if, that she will, but hopefully.
Right. I, I think you need to have a, have a document ready for people to review.
So let me, let, let me know Dana if I can be of help.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, you're welcome. Okay, uh, anything else tonight?
Thank you for your three years of.
So, thank you.
Did a great job. Hope you'll be back again.
Oh dear. Oh dear, dear, dear. So um, okay, I'm gonna go watch the last, the last uh season episode four, I think, of Sherlock. Um, if you haven't watched Benedict Cumberbatch as Sherlock Holmes, you're missing one of the great performances of all time, so I'm about to do that. So have a great night, everybody. Thank you.
Good night.
All right, and um, and so uh we can adjourn at seven oh nine PM.
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, um, see you Saturday.
Yes, you will.
Okay, take care. Thanks for being here, Marlo. Bye-bye. Good night, night Betsy.
That's.
Oh dear, Betsy?
You're muted, Betsy, but we did just adjourn.
You adjourned?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
That's okay.
Oh, well.
That's all right. Nice, nice to see you.
Did you decide to hire the Tom?
Yeah.
We did pass a contract.
Yes.
Great. I'm so glad. Thank you. Sorry.
Have a good night, everybody. See you at town meeting.
Yeah.
Town meeting.
Yay.